I'd like to call this meeting of the City of Elkhorn Common Council to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Our first order of business is to swear in Daniel Roberts as the new Alderman for District 6. So, Dan, if you'll rise and step back. And we will swear again.
Okay, you ready to stand here? I am Daniel Roberts.
I am Daniel Roberts.
Have you been elected or appointed to the House of Representatives?
Have you been elected or appointed to the House of Representatives? Swear or affirm that I was sworn to the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of that office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties and set office to the best of my ability.
So, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Tim Schroeder.
Here.
Peter Harvey.
Here.
Gary Payson Jr.
Here.
Rand Dunwoodie.
Here.
Scott McClory.
Here.
Ken Mynell.
Here.
Daniel Roberts.
Here.
And next, we've got public comment. I'll read my little statement here and then anyone that would like to speak in with a limit of three minutes. Public comments are limited to three minutes each. The public may speak on any item of city concern, whether or not the topic is included on this agenda. However, if the topic does not pertain to an item listed on the council agenda, the council is not permitted to address or discuss the matter during this meeting. Under open meeting laws, the council must notice an item on the agenda to allow discussion on that matter. If council is not permitted to discuss your concerns, your comments will be considered and may be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. If you'd like to speak, if you get up and give us your name and address. Would like to start.
Good evening, council. My name is Clayton Mazel. I'm attorney. I was retained by one of the residents of the Westford Drive. I have handouts here to support what I have to say if anyone is interested. The issue we want to talk about is the line item 11A, the possible reconsideration of the decision regarding the Westford Drive reconstruction project. It is our belief that it is inappropriate to consider a motion to reconsider this, the vote on this matter. The City of Elkhorn follows Roberts' order. It is clear that under the rules of order, you can do a motion to reconsider at either that meeting or a continuation of that meeting. Typically, you see that in cases of a convention where you have a multi-day meeting with the same board. There's unfinished business continuing on. It's essentially one meeting over a span of several days. We do not have that here. The April 7th meeting was an affirmative vote that disposed in a final matter the issue before the village council at the time. That is, the consideration of the Westford Drive project with no sidewalks. The minutes of that meeting show that there was no unfinished business left at table. The meeting was adjourned, finalized, not continued to another day for further discussion. If a motion to reconsider was to be proposed, it should have been proposed on April 7th. It was not. Is therefore inappropriate to consider such a motion again. There is further case law discussing whether a motion to reconsider can even be had when there is a vested right at issue. Here in this case, we have Landisack Corporation. Their bid for the project was approved at the April 7th vote, and it's our understanding that contract has been signed. Now, a motion to reconsider on that issue, if heard and then maybe that decision is rescinded, well, that's affecting Landisack Corporation's rights to that contract. And it is proper order, rules of order, other treatises, other authorities, and case law where you have the vested right. A city council cannot at a later date reconsider that vote or rescind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Anyone else like to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Lynn Schmidt Drake. I've lived at 223 Westwood Drive for the past 13 years with my husband, Rick. He's out of town for work, so I'm speaking with, for him as well. Our house was built in 1968. Now, 57 years later, the city has safety concerns on what is a one-block stretch of road that dead ends on both ends. We have joined our friends and neighbors to respectfully ask the common council to uphold the vote that was already passed on April 7th and execute the project for Westwood Drive with no sidewalks, as voiced at that meeting and in writing by surveys that the city mailed out, as well as in person to Alderman Harvey when he spoke with many of the neighbors on Westwood Drive on two separate occasions. The property owners have many concerns. A poll was done, residents resulting in nearly 80%, 20% result. The overwhelming consensus of residents do not wish to have the road project executed as originally proposed, with the white grass medians and five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the roads. It would make it feel like living on a stripped-down boulevard, with many of the large mature trees being sacrificed. We will be losing nine feet of our driveway and yard for the sake of concrete and asphalt. In nearly all the cases along the street, that eight to nine feet reduces the available parking by half. This will force significant more street parking on both sides of the street, causing congestion and safety concerns as people try to navigate, which would now become a de facto one-lane road. Residents didn't buy their house to have no driveway. You talk about new street and sidewalk standards. There are all sorts of widths, configurations, green spaces, as well as some with no sidewalks, sidewalks on only one side, et cetera. This gives character and charm to a city like Elkhorn. It's not the cookie cutter, plain vanilla standards of the modern subdivision. We like that character and charm. That's why we live here. There is no reason for a five-foot-wide airport landing strip of concrete on both sides of a small, narrow residential street like Westwood Drive. ADA guidelines don't even call for that. Clearly, there are many concerns and opinions. The overwhelming concern is the loss of mature trees, loss of parking in driveways, the sense of people right on top of your house as they walk down the sidewalk. If the city feels for safety reasons or some other unknown reason that sidewalks are an absolute must, then we must consider options. And I do believe in one of those meetings, there was many options about that. We believe that compromise is a possible here that could satisfy everybody. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Beth Cousin from 273 Wester Drive. As I spoke at the April 7th meeting, I am against having sidewalks. I bought my house there 15 years ago because I felt as I was aging, I would not have to worry about snow removal on a sidewalk. Now, the city is trying to force me into that by reneging on the vote that was made. Also, one of the things the city is not looking at with sidewalks is that sidewalks take and reflect back heat. And as we reflect back heat, it gets warmer. Last year was the warmest summer on record. And if we have more sidewalks, more concrete, it's just going to reflect more heat. That's going to be a safety issue. We do not need the sidewalks. We need the grass, we need the trees, we need the flowers. We need everything that helps to prevent the heat from going back up into the environment. And so, I am against having the sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Amanda?
Hello, I'm Amanda Bedard at 232 Wester Drive. Everyone kind of knows my reasoning behind it. We need the driveway space, the length of the driveway, just for our lifestyle, what we're, you know, the way we live. And if it's taken away, it's, we'll seriously have to move. Like, it's not, oh, we'll figure it out. There's, we've been out there in storms, in the rain, trying to figure out with every means possible. It's just not going to work for us to stay if you put sidewalks in. I just, I don't know what else to say. And I know that with the Roberts Rule of Order also, you can't keep bringing up the same topic. When you bring it back into reconsideration, you have to bring up new. You guys are worried about the safety. You need something new. There's nothing, you're falling back on that and you have to keep going. You got to bring something else to the table. So, please consider to take the sidewalks out, like the original motion was on the 7th, so we can still keep our driveway space and I can continue to live on Westwood Drive where I want to live, raise my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hi. I'm Cindy Levine at 232 Wester Drive. I've been down on Westwood Drive since 1979. Built our first house when I got married, 19 years, I was 18 years old. We decided to build our house, new house, right next door. That's how much we liked Westwood Drive, no sidewalks. And I know safety is a very important concern, but if that was, that was a factor that was brought up also back in March, on March 17th at this meeting. And it was talked about and by reviewing the video of this council meeting back then, it was brought up, I believe by Mayor Schroeder, Schroeder or Alderman Harvey about that and about the safety. There was a little bit of talk, just a little bit of talk about safety. And then asked if there was any more comments or concerns. Then the whole room was quiet. There was no, no more talk about it. So then you went on to the next subject with that, what that was on that agenda at that time. So, basically, for a reconsideration, you do need to have new findings per the rules. And I feel you did not follow proper procedures for this. And again, April 7th, April 7th at the meeting, this was approved. It was denied at first, notion was, motion was denied. Then it went back for a second vote and it came back as four to one, as sidewalks would be removed. And then it went to the consideration of the contract with Landisack Group out of Burlington. And then that was, and the term with sidewalks being omitted, or maybe didn't say omitted, but being removed at that point. And then it was voted on. One Alderman was absent that night, but then it was voted on five to zero, with remove sidewalks for the project in Westwood Drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here in Fraser, 271 Westward. You need, the proof is in the pudding after you voted the no sidewalks. You put it in the paper. Guys need to stick to the rules that you applied and voted for. Take the sidewalks off the menu. There's nothing wrong with our street. It's perfect the way it is. And obviously, you're going to do the sewers, which is fine, but we do not need sidewalks. You'll have more issues if you put them in than if you, than if you just leave them out. We like it the way it is. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gerald Snyder. I own three properties on Westwood Drive and honestly, I don't know why we're even here tonight. We already voted on it. It was voted, it was approved, it was seconded, it was passed. And then you went behind our backs after the meeting was over and changed it all up. But now you want to redo it again. You want to redo. I don't understand what's going on around here, but this isn't right. And people have spoken. 80% of the people don't want the sidewalks on that street. And it was passed and seconded and approved. And then now you guys are keep bringing it up, keeping it, is this going to keep happening? If you don't get your way? I mean, that's not right. That's, it's just not right. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Joy Ponte. I've been here before. I really don't understand why I'm here again. I don't want sidewalks. I've lived on Westwood Drive for 30 years without sidewalks. My children have been safe. We've walked to Westwood, we've walked to Sunset Park. We've done swimming lessons. I don't understand why Pete Harvey is doing this to us, but I, I just don't, I don't want sidewalks. I, I don't understand why we need to change our neighborhood. It's beautiful how it is. I don't want to see landscape taken away. I don't want to see trees cut down. It was built without sidewalks and it should stay without sidewalks. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Geffert. I live at 240 Westwood Drive. I had the pleasure of talking to Mr. Harvey for 20 minutes this afternoon, and I understand his position. My vote is for no sidewalks. His vote is for sidewalks based on the criteria of safety, safety, safety. I get it. You're concerned about the safety of the community and the children, et cetera. I bought my house from Mike Beaver 30 years he had lived there. I lived there 13 years. Total of 43 years, no incidences that we're aware of. No speeding, no personal liability. So I thought, let me do a fact check. I'm going to go to the police department this afternoon. I push the button and who appears? But Mr. Christensen, the chief of police. He and I had a nice conversation and we talked about Westwood Drive, the need for sidewalks, the pros and cons. I get it. The safety is the number one criteria and factor. But for you to cite a Florida DOT study is justification to do it. Little Elkhorn to me is beyond reproach. And for you not to support the people, and there's a smirk on your face, thank you. For you not to support the people that put you in position, 80% of us do not want this sidewalk. Jimmy Jones Subdivision, it was built back in the 60s and 70s, was based on the criteria, no sidewalks. The streets end one way in, one way out. It's like a gated community without a gate. It's a private drive without being private. There's no through traffic. I invited you to sit on my deck and have a beer or two. You'll sit there and you'll have a six-pack and you won't see more than one or two cars. And those cars will be the neighbors coming or going, not through traffic. I'm a little upset from the standpoint, the people here voted you in, yet you're taking the stand of the safety, which I get, I get it. All rules need to be understood and there's exceptions to all rules. In this case, 90% of the streets probably do need sidewalks. I'd agree with you. But we're the exception and not the rule. Thank you. I think I've spoke my mind and I hope that we get the proper vote from the folks around this room. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Asking again, anyone? Okay, public comment is closed. Next, we've got the consent agenda. Item B, the temporary beer license for Wildwood County Agriculture Society has been removed. They pulled the application, so we're not considering that tonight. All we have is the council meeting minutes from April 7th, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to please move item 11A to the front of the agenda for these folks. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. We'll move that up and then we'll return to the consent agenda. So we're going to skip down to unfinished business, item A, the discussion about Westwood Drive and the sidewalks. First of all, I'd like to, can we get a legal opinion from Elaine on Roberts' Rule of Order? Is Elaine with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. And members of the council, thank you for allowing me to appear via Zoom. I was, came back from being out of town and my partner was going to be there, but he is not feeling well and he actually has lost his voice, so he can't talk at all right now. So I appreciate the accommodation. So Joel was kind enough to take pictures of what the attorney for the Westford Drive property owner submitted to the council. So I've had an opportunity to briefly look over that. I am somewhat familiar with this matter because I know this has come up on your prior agendas and it was on the April 7th agenda, this particular item for Westford Drive to talk about the sidewalks. So the attorney submitted some information about the reconsideration rule. So the city does follow Roberts' Rules of Order. The city also has its own rule on reconsideration. And the reason for that is because the Roberts' Rules of Order are meant for assemblies much like your senate or your assembly at the state of Wisconsin, where you have multiple day, days of meetings in a row. And that's some, that's why sometimes Roberts' Rules of Order do not fit real well with how municipalities conduct their business because you have a meeting, you know, once every couple of weeks. And, and so that's why you often have your own rule. So you do have that under chapter two of your code. And I did pull that up and that is under 2.01 sub 10D. And it does read as follows. "It shall be in order for any member of a majority to move for reconsideration of any vote in question at the same meeting or, or at the next succeeding regular adjourned meeting. A motion to reconsider being put in law shall not be renewed." So that is your rule in your code. And so this was noticed up, I noticed as per the agenda that it's a, it's noticed for possible reconsideration. I, I disagree and it's, it's our opinion that you do have the ability to reconsider this item at this meeting. This is your next succeeding meeting and it's been interpreted as such. When you have this kind of rule in your code, the intention of it is for you to be able to, if, if it's noticed up appropriately for a person who sits in the majority of the motion that was made and that was successful at that prior meeting, to be able to make a motion to reconsider that, that piece of business. So because you're not in assembly, you don't have a continuation of meetings. So you have a modified rule that allows you to bring it up at the next regular meeting. So you are able to do that. The procedure is that a person who voted in the majority would have to make the motion. The person, a person, any, I'm sorry, any one of the council members would be able to second that if they were so inclined. And you could debate whether to reconsider it, but you wouldn't get to the underlying motion, the underlying topic, unless a majority votes in favor of reconsidering and reopening the particular item. Second, I do want to address the question about whether or not there's a vested right or interest with the underlying contract because that was brought up. But before I do that, do, does any member of the council have a question about the rule that you have on the books for reconsideration?
I do. Mayor. Elaine, we had another scheduled meeting last week that was planned. That was on 15th of April. So that was the next successive meeting after the 7th, where we did discuss beyond just reorg. We had other actions that took place in that meeting. Does that apply as the next meeting?
No, I, that was a special meeting. That wasn't one of your regularly scheduled meetings. Are there any other questions?
Elaine, there was a, there was a comment made about having to have new facts or something like that in order to reconsider something.
Well. Yes, so usually, and, and I do think that is, is correct in part. When, we don't want to have a habit of just reconsidering things to reconsider it. So in support of a motion to reconsider, if that gets a second, the person who has made that motion should state the reasons why they want it reconsidered. And those can stem from new information or misinformation or a miss, a sort of a misconstruction of prior information received or misunderstanding of prior information, incorrect information, a correction, you know, to something that was stated that was part of the basis for the vote and the way that the vote, you know, was based on. So it's, it's important for the body to, there should be a legitimate reason for you to reconsider, not just because you want to have another kick at the cat, so to speak. So, but that piece of information, the importance of it and whatever that information is, the, the, as the council members vote, if, if you have a successful motion with a second, when it comes time for a vote, you get to decide whether you think that's an appropriate piece of information to change your vote on.
Thank you.
I've got one question for Elaine.
Yes.
Because I was the only person that was absent for that meeting. So is it appropriate for me to vote on this one if it does go to the vote?
Yes, you, you can vote. You don't have to, to abstain. If you feel that you want to participate, you can vote. If you feel that you do not want to participate, you can also abstain. Any other questions about the procedure?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. And I just, so I want to address the second point that was raised and the question is about a vested interest. I also agree in part with the attorney's statements that if, if you have a situation where you have, for example, approved a contract and you've already signed a contract and there has been a performance by whoever you've entered into that contract and it is to their detriment or it somehow harms their position as they've performed in reliance with the contract, that can be a problem. So I'll make a very lawyerly statement that it, it depends on the situation. So in here, we have a situation where I don't know if that contract has been signed yet or not. It's a construction contract and I, I don't know all of the facts surrounding how that was bid out and any alternative bids and so forth. But as the council is aware, sometimes when you're in a construction contract, sometimes there are changes and sometimes those changes are accomplished via a change order. sometimes there are changes and sometimes those changes are accomplished via a change order. So I I don't know the underlying question about whether there's an issue if the contract has already been awarded and in fact, it's already been signed. It is possible to make adjustments to the construction contracts. That happens a lot as things happen on, within certain parameters, but it can happen with your underlying construction contracts. So it, that sort of is a depend question. And it's going to be judged by whatever those facts are. So if there are concerns about it, if the council is so inclined to reconsider this item, but there are concerns about impacts on the underlying contract, you can either, you could table the item. Once it's, if it's reopened, you could table action on it and set it over for your next meeting, which would now then, of course, have it in an open status, meaning the decision on the sidewalks, for that piece to be evaluated. It might be that Matt or Adam could also answer questions as to the status of that contract.
Hey. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Elaine, I don't, I don't know if you were present at that meeting or not, but the contract was awarded that night with Wannasek. And it was awarded with sidewalks in there per plan. And the approach was to work with them on a change order to remove the sidewalks based on the meetings that were, the prior council meeting where it was discussed.
Okay, so it was actually awarded with sidewalks. So we have a potential change order that we would need to address with them anyway. So if, in this situation, the current action of the council from the seventh was without sidewalks, so we'd have that change order issue to address with them. So.
That's, that's what we have been working with them on. We haven't got, received anything yet, but we are working with them on it. We've had discussions with them.
Okay, all right. So it's kind of the reverse issue that was raised by council for one of the property owners. So in any event, we're familiar with how change orders work. And at this point, your decision is sidewalks are out. So we were going to be working with them to to adjust that contract. If the council is so inclined to want to reconsider it and that motion passes, then the underlying vote would need to be decided, you know, matter would need to be up for debate and then a possible additional vote. Are there any other questions or concerns?
No, thank you, Elaine.
You're welcome.
So we have a matter before us for possible reconsideration. I think, is there a motion to reconsider?
I'll make a motion to reconsider on the grounds that not Alderman, all the Aldermen who had taken in the two previous votes where, or the previous vote was here. And then how this applies to how our city, how our city standards are going to be going moving forward.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, you betcha there is. So we have votes whether everybody's here or not. Does that mean every time one of us misses, we go back and we do another kick at the can? No, we continue to move forward. And I don't think that's an acceptable reason to reopen this because that has to do with the project. This had not to do with the vote, but with the project. As I understand from what Elaine said, it has to be something different to do with the project that we voted on, not who was here to vote. Is that a fair statement, Elaine?
Yes, it would be a new piece of information. And I I heard two things. I heard he was concerned that not all the Alders were present. I do think it's correct that, I don't know that you want to set a practice where every time an Alder misses, you have the potential to bring things back for reconsideration because that could just hamper your ability to get business done. Second, I think I heard that, and there was a, I don't know if it said misunderstanding, but there was a concern about the standards that the city is setting. So I heard those two reasons for the reason for reconsideration. And again, as the members of the council, you get to judge whether those are sufficient reasons to reconsider as you place your, make your vote in this situation.
So in to build on that, we've already set precedent of not following city standard. Most recently, we did it on Centralia Street, where we decided not to put sidewalks in because of the cost factor and what was the purpose of doing it. So this isn't something new. We also made that decision in Greenacre subdivision. It shouldn't, the policy or the ordinance needs to be updated, in my opinion, to reflect. We should be looking at each project and looking at replacing in kind or going through and meeting with the community accordingly about adding sidewalks or doing whatever. It shouldn't just be a cookie cutter and make a decision, this is what it is. I still don't believe that you have met the standard to reconsider this. And keep in mind, this isn't the king of seven. We're representatives of people. Your people are out there speaking, but please keep order, please, keep order. It is our responsibility to listen to our constituents. And all these folks are very much so impacted on this street. This isn't the entire first district, the entire second district. These are the people being affected directly. And they have spoken at almost eighty percent saying no. It is our responsibility to listen to the people. That is, the government of the United States is to listen to the people.
Anyone else have any comments? Hearing none will vote on the motion to reconsider. A roll call, please.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Gary Payson, Jr.?
No.
Ron Dunwoodie?
May I make one comment on this, mayor? Do we have to just go straight yes or no right now?
I think once you, once you say.
Straight yes, no. That's what I thought. In this case, I will have to go no.
Scott McCorey?
No.
Ken Minow?
Yes.
Daniel Roberts?
No.
So the motion to reconsider failed.
That's correct.
Okay, four to two.
End of discussion. Right?
Yep. So thank, thank you for coming. You're, you're more than welcome to stay because we've got exciting city business. But if you'd like to file out, you're more than welcome to do that too before we continue.
I'll have to be a president.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed in the minutes, or the agenda.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any, any additions or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Bill's payable, we've got bills in the amount of two million, seven hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty seven cents.
Make a motion to pay the bills with that number you asked.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson, Jr.?
Yes.
Scott McCorey?
Yes.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Ken Minow?
Yes.
Daniel Roberts?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Next, we have a presentation from John Donovan from Belinsky Homes for a consent plan for West Market Street residential subdivision. You've got the floor, John, anytime you want.
Thank you, mayor. So we were here last Thursday at the planning commission and now we're at the common council in regards to a project that Belinsky is wanting to move forward with in your city. Belinsky's been in this city for a long time, building single family and condominiums and some commercial. Our plan here on Market Street, I'm going to, I'm going to go into details of the plan a little bit later. Our plans here are for forty three single family small lot subdivision. It's, it's an initiative of Belinsky to get back into the market. Many years ago, Belinsky was known as more of a track builder. We feel that there's a lot of small housing. Attainable housing is what our initiative is called in regards to all over southeastern Wisconsin and most of the state of Wisconsin, where we can't find the single family homes, brand new, under four hundred thousand dollars. So an example that got us back into this market was that Jefferson, the city of, came to us and said they had five single family lots left and that would we like to build some homes. And I have to admit, our bosses were a little apprehensive of doing it because we haven't done it in a while. So we planned it, we bought the lots, we built the houses and we got them to drywall and all five of them had accepted offers and all five of them closed. That's a really good thing. So we have a lot of land in Watertown that we own. And we've got probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred single family and condominiums that we still have to build out that we've owned for twenty five years. And we felt, based on the things that are going on in southeastern Wisconsin, employment specifically to Jefferson, that we need to reconsider what we're doing in Watertown and come up with a plan for a third of those acreage that is still available to build small lot, single family homes, under four hundred thousand. So we went through that whole process with the city, got it all approved, and we are going to be starting construction this summer on phase two and three. We already have eight lots that are ready for phase one and we have home state. Our plan there is to continuously build out all the homes and not wait for individual people that want to pick out everything so that we continue on moving forward. We think the market is there. And so we've been discussing this with a lot of different communities in the area, particularly Waterford. We've gone to Port Washington. We have another development we're looking at. I met with one of the owners of some land in Whitewater for some smaller, single family lots. So I think this is a new thing. I think it's very well needed in a lot of communities. And I'm really excited that Belinsky wants to take part in it and be a leader, hopefully, in it. So that's kind of where we're at tonight. We have had this land on Market Street under contract many years ago. It was for apartments, it was for condominiums, it was for quite a few things. Never got it to fruition. And it came back up on the market and we figured, you know what? This might be a good spot for small lot, single family. There would be some participation and partnership that we would have with the city in regards to some TIF incentive money to keep the pricing down on construction costs and things of that nature. I don't know if you guys are aware, obviously, construction costs are extremely high. Development costs are extremely high with utilities. So there is some, in order to, I believe, in order to bring this type of single family homes to the communities, there needs to be participation and partnerships with the cities and even the landowners. So with that said, our plan here is pretty simple. We don't have a lot of layout changes that can be done. I know in some of the reports by Kapoor or even the city planner is to maybe modify some of the roadways. We are all open for that. We are open to try and come up with what is the best small lot, single family for this parcel. We have a lot of work to do. We have wetland delineations that have to take place. We have to probably look at the soil borings a little bit more carefully that have been done probably ten years ago and start planning this. Our goal here would be to get your feedback, answer any questions you can, and then we would probably do our due diligence and come back in about probably sixty days. And I would like to expedite the process probably a little quicker than some. And I think we would probably come back with the general development plan and the SPI at the same time so that we can complete this process and hopefully get started. We would love to be able to start in two thousand and twenty five, but I don't think that's probably going to be a realistic goal. I wish it was, but I think we could definitely start in the spring of two thousand and twenty six. So these lots are a little bit less. We're going to have to come through with a planned unit development. There are some relief setbacks, widths and dimensions. They are all on the plan. They are also in the summary page that I provided to the city in regards to some of the reliefs we will be looking at. I think it's attainable for everybody that would be on board that this subdivision could certainly go through based on what we're trying to accomplish here. So at that, at this point, if there's any questions or comments, that's what I'm here for. Thank you.
Thursday night, Naomi, the engineer, was talking about a reconfiguration of the streets. Did you get that information from her?
I did.
And and does it, does it make sense or you're working on it? Because you're.
I'm thinking about it, mayor.
Okay.
It is under consideration. It will be discussed at our development meeting tomorrow with the owners. So we're, we're open. We're not saying our plan is perfect. I'm not saying, you know, it's, it's, it's what we're trying to accomplish. It's the goal. If we all can work together to be, be able to get to that goal, you know, the streets work better a different way, we're up for that. We just don't want to lose too many lots.
Right, right.
Or it doesn't make the project affordable. So yes, we are, we will consider it.
Yep. Does anyone else have any?
Yeah, I just want to say, we need to do everything we can to keep the cost down. People cannot afford a half a million dollar house.
Uh, no, they can't. Well, they are, but they.
I don't know how they're doing it, but, and this is not the place to discuss it. But anything we can do to make sure that these clauses are cost affordable for young families starting is very, very appreciative. I, thank you.
You're welcome. And I, let me point out, the homes that we sold in Jefferson, the five that we sold were under three seventy five. And the ones we were planning on selling in Watertown are under four hundred. So we are, we are very conscious of the costs and we are very, we are trying really hard to keep them under four.
I, I heard three seventy five. You can quote me on that?
No, you also, also you heard four hundred, so.
Well, I just heard the lower number. We can't bid up, you can only bid down. Thank you.
Okay, I was just in a subdivision in Waukesha.
Speak up here.
Sorry, I'm sorry. This one we didn't think anybody else put, in Waukesha and River Road and Lawndale, Lawnsdale? Are you familiar with that? Was it Belinsky Homes there? Okay. Then my question would be.
Why, I mean, is there, I, I know Waukesha pretty well, but I, I don't think it was, I don't know if it was a Belinsky development.
Yeah, it's.
It's, it's probably not a Belinsky development, but we purchased quite a few lots.
Okay, nevermind.
Yes. Those are well over six to seven hundred thousand.
Okay.
Have you been to Waukesha?
Huh?
Have you been to Waukesha?
Yeah, we have.
It's one of the most expensive counties in the state.
No, we have, we have, we have multiple subdivisions in Waukesha and they are six hundred and above in sort of the condominiums.
I just wanted, I just was looking at those homes as I was driving through there and wondering how they, how they compare to these ones.
They don't.
Okay.
I'm really excited to see if, especially in twenty twenty six to begin groundbreaking, you're going to still be able to come under four hundred thousand. I am fully expecting.
Well, you know.
I, hang on, let me finish. I got the floor. I am fully, I am fully expecting you to come back in the late part of twenty twenty five, early part of twenty twenty six and say, guess what? Here's the new number. Because I don't see you doing it for under four hundred thousand. I just don't. I hope I'm wrong. I'll be the first, I'll be the first to fall on the sword.
I believe it's, it's attainable goal and it needs a partnership with the city.
I hope you're right.
I, I have a question. I was just wondering, because of the location of the subdivision and basically the fact that Elkhorn is built on a swamp, if that's anybody, is there going to be any special treatment to the basements in these homes to make sure that they don't have water seepage? Because that seems to be a big problem in our city.
Well, that's because you got this wonderful clay soils around here. You know, we, we passed on a subdivision that's very close to this on the opposite side of sixty seven because of clay soils. on the opposite side of sixty-seven because of clay soils and they were unstable. And Bolinsky's not in a position, we really don't want to build houses at all without basements. Special needs? I can't really answer anything like that until we really look and dive in at the soil borings and things of that nature but there's waterproofing that can be done and there's also, you can possibly have additional sump pumps if needed but that's all get tested by the engineers first before we even get any further.
There has been tests done in that area with some of the others, yeah.
There has been-
But the results are, I, I don't know.
Yeah, there are boring, there are boring tests that are out there, I know that.
Right, there has been, yes.
Any more questions? Are you, are you satisfied with the responses you've got here? The, I mean, I, for one, I think there's a pretty positive project. I, I didn't really hear any-
Well, I think a little, a couple more people are a little quiet tonight than they were at the planning commission but that's okay. We'll be back probably sixty days, maybe ninety days because we would probably want to streamline this as quickly as we can. It doesn't mean we're not going to miss anything with engineering and planning but we can do both processes. I've done it before where you do both processes. You've got concept review, then you have either a general development plan and then a, what they call a, I think, an S I P, Special Implementation Plan. We can combine those two together and come through with the approvals at the same time. They'll be under one plan. They'll be titled the, both, both the same.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
The other thing, John, you are planning on starting on the condos this year.
We are, yes.
So, they're going to start on that project.
We are. Is the attorney still on?
Well-
That's a joke. Take it. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got the report of city officers. Excuse me, I just got one thing. We inadvertently left Ken Minell as the liaison for the Chamber of Commerce off the reorganizational meeting agenda and we'd, we'd like a motion to appoint him.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Then we cleaned up that bit of business. Reports of city boards and community partners, fire advisory.
Just give me a minute. I don't know. But I know unfortunately, John just walked out but the one thing we did mention in the planning commission meeting that we didn't say tonight is that, you know, we have received a lot of proposals for this, that West Market Street parcel. We met with a lot of developers and they've all been multifamily apartments. This is the first single family proposal we've seen. So, from our perspective, it's one of the reasons we're most excited about this, this proposal and we think it would probably encounter the least opposition from the residents in that area who are concerned about more apartments, so. And just to the council's credit, you guys, when you approved the TID that was just created recently, you specifically included this parcel in that. And that was one of the big goals when we designed it and had it laid out. When we had questions as to why we drew it the way we did, it was to get this parcel in there. So, when you talk about, you know, what can the city do? Well, you guys did already take that leap of faith, so. But moving on, just real quickly, I just wanted to just clarify that former alderman Kurt Hartness, when he submitted his original resignation, he was going to be effective May twenty-second. Last week, I guess it would have been on April fifteenth, he submitted a revised resignation date prior to the organizational meeting. So, that's why that, the new alderman, Dan Roberts, got sworn in today earlier than originally had been anticipated when he first got that resignation. Second, the central water treatment plant reservoir bypass project, we are nearing the finish line. They're doing the, the water testing on that this week. Hopefully, it will be back online by the end of the week. And then, just want to commend the fire department, electric department, law department, I'm sorry, public works department, electric, fire and police for their help with the four hundred North of Washington Street fire that they had on April fifteenth and also all the communities that provide mutual aid. So, thanks to everybody for that. Thankfully, the building sustained damage but there was no loss of life for, so, kudos to everybody for their help on that. And then just a reminder, we do have a joint meeting with the towns of Sugar Creek, Lafayette and Geneva this week on Thursday at five thirty here. Let's talk about the fire station and fire department equipment needs, so. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Now, we'll move on to city boards and community partners, fire advisory. Okay. Library. Usually Chad's here. He sent me an email. What did I do with it? I lost it. Oh, there you go. I said the library grant ad hoc committee met on April fourth to continue to finalize plans for the grant project. They completed the first draft phasing for scheduling different aspects of the project and they're expecting the bulk of the construction to happen this fall. Library closures could be possible but they'll continue to work on a finalized plan and keep everybody in the loop. Thank you. Rec advisory.
Yes, we'll be meeting on Wednesday, April thirtieth in City Hall at five thirty P M.
Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening. Just a chamber update, just to let everybody know what is going on in the chamber world. It's starting to become event season but our guide, our community guide that we use as a community piece and a tourism piece should be hitting our doors in-house for us on the seventh but they will be direct mailed to the five three one two one and a little bit of the Geneva National zip code in there. They should be hitting either May fifth or the twelfth and that's approximately just shy of eleven thousand that are direct mailed. We do print an additional twenty-two thousand that we distribute throughout the year to other communities and events that we do. Starting May seventeenth kicks off our summer events with our spring food truck. As of right now, we have twenty different trucks and we have forty-seven different vendors that will be in the park, growing every day as far as that goes. They always love to see what the ten day forecast is. So, May seventh, which is also a very important day in the chamber world, which is our golf outing. Our golf outing has been sold out. We fill at Evergreen, we do all eighteen holes is filled but you are welcome to join us for our annual dinner and awards night is after that in the pavilion at approximately five thirty-ish. Following on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, starts Saturdays on the square. It runs fourteen weeks long. The only weekend we will not be there is the fifth of July, that Saturday. Most of our vendors have pulled that they would like a long weekend, so we respect that. And as of right now, we have twenty-five full-time season participants and then we have ebbs and flows that come in either weekly or some of them do like the first and third Saturday, things like that. So, that is where we start on those. Then we'll start into July and we have a new event at the fairgrounds that we're assisting them with, which is Bacon Fest. It was an established event that was in Lake Geneva, which was on Memorial Day weekend, which was a struggling time in the city of Lake Geneva for parking and getting around for them. So, it has relocated to the Walworth County Fairgrounds. It is a ticketed event, so it's not like Rib Fest where it's free to get in and you just pay to eat. This is a ticketed event put on by a promotions company but we are assisting with some of their needs and it looks like a very fun time. It's Friday afternoon, Saturday and Sunday. So, if you're interested in testing all different kinds of bacon and they do have a great band lineup, so. Just on a side note, with everything that was talking about with sidewalks, I did have somebody call me, and I hate to bring this up, in reference, it was a little old lady that must have a rabbit and in your animal thing under page twelve, one A, it says livestock meaning fowl, cows, cattle, horses, sheep, swine, goats, chickens and rabbits are not allowed and she has a rabbit and she's very concerned about her rabbit. So, I'm just conveying that and I can pass on her name and number if somebody would like to call her.
She might want it.
Or, or I will call her back after discussions tonight. And the other thing is, I was interested in the conversation you're going to have about food truck. I went through that in detail and I'll listen to hear your comments. So, that's all we have.
Thanks, Chris. Katie. See, I finally get it right and call on you and then you've got nothing. Our second item of unfinished business is a discussion and possible decision regarding ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero seven and ordinance amending the city's regulation of animals within the city limits. Did everyone see the two styles of ordinances? One with the changes, one without? Any discussion? Chief, did you get a chance to look at those? Do you have an opinion on these animal ordinances?
Yes, but specifically in regards to barking dogs is my largest question and kind of where the council was going after that last meeting that I wanted to discuss after a motion I made.
I guess I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Gary but the biggest, the biggest issue was the two written notice, two written complaints within a four-week period.
Correct, and that's what I wanted to, to discuss with the council. So, I don't know if you want to make a motion first so we can have a discussion on it or where you want to go.
I think, I think we can have a discussion, can't we?
I think so.
Before we, we'd love to hear your opinion.
So, yeah, okay. So, did everyone see Captain Brandl's, I guess, memo, first of all, in your materials for tonight's meeting?
Yes.
Because I guess we were unaware that there was going to be any change to the draft last week until the city attorney mentioned about the written complaints in regards to barking dogs. And we do have concerns with that for, mostly because we don't have problems with how we're enforcing it currently. And it seems to me that we're trying to create, we're looking for a problem that doesn't currently exist and why are we doing so? The way we have been doing things has been working and I think the change that was talked about, making two written complaints, could be detrimental to kind of what this, the reason for the ordinance is, which is to kind of preserve the public peace. Oftentimes, neighbors have a difficult time phoning or even coming to us with concerns about kind of public order concerns with other neighbors. That could be for fear of retaliation, just to be, they want to be a good neighbor. They, they don't want to kind of upset things, so to speak. So, they oftentimes, they, they call in, when they do call in, they call in anonymously or they stop into us and say, I want this report to be anonymous but the dog's barking all the time. Can you just keep an eye out for it? Or can you go over there if they're calling? And then we're that, kind of that outside person or party that goes and says, yeah, this is a problem. I can see what they're talking about. And we go and have those conversations with the dog owner. Usually, the dog owners are responsible. It's just the irresponsible dog owners that we have to kind of worry about and work through solutions to. But we're not writing tickets right away. We're working with the dog owners to try and solve the problem. And so, I guess that's our concern is, we want to keep the language the way it was written before in our current ordinance or the first draft of this ordinance was. We, that's how we would prefer to keep it because we don't want to cause any more problems.
Does anyone else?
Yeah, I just, my biggest concern with that is, I've had people complain and basically like a vendetta against other people and it's like, and you go by and you hear it yourself and it's like there's nothing there. So, there are people that enjoy creating nonsense. As you're aware of, some other situations involving parking, so on and so forth, that's my concern is people that want to constantly use the police department incorrectly.
Yeah, but I would say that that goes back on us because if we go back, if we go out there and it's anonymous complaint and we're not hearing anything, truly, the expectation of our officers would be, you're not taking any enforcement action. Nothing was observed.
Now, another question is, if you have someone that's always doing anonymous, do you really know who is actually contacting? So, if they're always sending you out, at some point, they're misusing the police department and should be cited. So, if they're anonymous type scenario, you know what I mean? You know, I'm trying to articulate.
Sure, sometimes, I mean, sometimes they are truly anonymous where they call it anonymously and we don't know who the caller is. Other times, we know who that anonymous reporter is but we have to maintain their confidentiality. And, yeah, sometimes it, it does get trying, to say the least but I think we, we do our best to work through that.
And I, and I said this, I'm sorry, are you done? I was just going to say, I'd be fine with taking it out as long as we have that type of confidence in moving forward with the police department.
Yes, so.
I'd like to make that motion that we take that language out. So, then do, and take the language out and what the police department specifies with the barking and howling dogs.
So, you're saying the original draft of the ordinance?
Yes. I was so confused last week. Yes, that is exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, I would second. Now, you have something to say.
I, I was just going to, I made my posture on this pretty clear last week but that, that striking out of the, the, the two written formal complaints every four weeks or whatever is just going to be a nightmare. So, I'm glad we, hopefully collectively, decided to rescind that.
I appreciate that. Okay, any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just, I guess, to circle back, I, I know there was a comment made on a different vendor item with a question about livestock. I just wanted to make sure that if the council has any concerns, now would be the time to address that related to a rabbit. Your current ordinance, you know, specified any livestock, poultry, horses or other animals except cats, dogs or other household pets. And so, this ordinance obviously gives more definition to that and I just wanted to know whether you have any concerns about that for people that might have rabbits as-
Question for you, Elaine. Now, other, if you get a rabbit from the pet store, it's not wild. So, therefore, wouldn't it fall under other?
No. I'm, I'm, I, I don't think it would because if you go to Tractor Supply and buy five chicks, they're domesticated chicks, I can have them in the city. They're not livestock. You're talking a slippery slope.
Okay, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
I, I would say no, but.
Yeah.
Didn't I read something in here about ferrets? We're okay to have in the city? Wasn't that here someplace? Or am I? Anybody?
Um, hold on just a second.
Yeah, it says you cannot, it's under, under nine oh seven eight one, you cannot have any livestock or any domesticated livestock. So, if it's livestock, it's farm animal, animal. Doesn't matter if it's domesticated or not.
Right.
I don't know anybody that has a ferret farm, I guess. Sincerely, I, I just, I mean, I don't know.
Chief, has this, has this been a problem or is there some discretion that can be used? If a little girl has a rabbit or something, but where are we, where are we on that?
I guess I'd like to take a look at the specific language that we're looking at. I don't have it in front of me.
Trying to flip through it here, I was operating-
Page fifty format of the PDF of the council packet.
Okay. Oh, there it is. Yep. Thank you, Adam. Livestock means fowl, cows, cattle, horses, sheep, swine, goats, chickens, rabbits, ducks, turkey, pigeons. So, I don't know if you're okay with like domesticated rabbits or, it wouldn't be wild rabbits. I know that there's, that's a hard distinction.
Well, again, what, what constitutes domesticated livestock? Who's going to be the judge and jury of that?
I, your police department. Ultimately, the judge. I know, these get hard, so. Right. I only brought it up because somebody mentioned it.
Thanks, Chris.
You do have to draw a line somewhere, so, right now- You do have to draw a line somewhere, so, right now.
Go ahead, Elaine.
I was just saying, right now, you do have a motion to approve as presented with the change dealing with the complaints. So right now, it, it would read as it's here on page 54, so it would be a prohibition.
And that's the way it currently reads, right? Chief, you cannot have rabbits, turkeys, geese, or other domesticated livestock.
Or pigeons.
In, in regards to the current ordinance?
Like, right now, as we live and breathe, can you have a rabbit?
I believe so.
So we added that you can't have rabbits?
I believe this was added.
It was vague, it just said that no person shall raise or keep on any lot within the city any livestock, poultry, horses, or other animals except cats, dogs, or other household pets, but household pets was not defined.
People have thorns, I've known people that have had rabbits in the house, you can train and use lure, but, so.
Does anyone care, does anyone care if people have rabbits?
Have, no.
In their house? Okay, there you go. Wait, go on.
I guess we have received, I know of at least one complaint in regards to, this was numerous rabbits, so they were being raised in a garage, and the odors that then emit because of that. I, I do know that was a concern.
I do remember that. So if they're raising, or breeding, wouldn't that fall under the, one of the other sections of this ordinance about breeding the self?
Yes. You could also revise this to say, like, more than one rabbit, or something like that as well.
Would that help?
Yes, because I, obviously I don't have a concern or an issue with a person having a, a pet rabbit, but it, it is the, it comes down to the number and then the odor because of the number.
Sure, sure. So. So it sounds like we need to chew up this ordinance again, because we're not ready to pass it.
No.
So.
Couldn't, couldn't we just eliminate the word rabbit on the list of livestock here?
I don't hope you wanna do that.
Don't wanna do that.
We don't?
Like I said, well, let's vote on the motion on the floor.
Well, I can, I can table it, I have no problem table it if you guys wanna come back.
We have to rescind the motion in a second. Well, as long as, no, you and I can't do anything, so the other four has got to ask for it to be tabled.
Mr. Mayor, you also entertain a motion to amend to indicate a reflection of a change, modifying 9.07/10A under 1 to say more than one rabbit.
Okay, so, did you catch that? So if you, if you amended your motion to say more than one rabbit?
I amend my motion to say more than one rabbit.
It's prohibited.
It's prohibited.
More than one is prohibited.
And I second that, no more than one rabbit.
Good call.
Domesticated.
Okay.
So you're the second person accepts that amendment as well?
Yes, yes.
You said.
Yes, I did.
You would vote on the underlying, on that amendment, and then if that passes, then you would vote on the primary motion as amended.
Yeah, so this vote is on amending the language to say not more than one rabbit.
Domesticated.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment passes, now we need a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
You should be here, Elaine.
I know, I'm sorry.
We've got a discussion and possible decision regarding proposed resolution number 2025-10, a resolution affirming the sale of Lot 70 in the business park.
I make a motion to approve this sale of Lot 70.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'm sorry, just real quick, just so you know, the person we're selling it to, even though the, the salesman assigned to a different company, the purpose is still the same, they're still billing it for the purpose of leasing it to Fastenal, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We've got a discussion and possible decision regarding proposed task order number 30 with Kupour and Associates to provide GIS services necessary for full water supply modeling at a cost not to exceed $8,880.
Where is the money coming from? What account? Did I did something?
This is the water.
I'll make a motion to approve that task.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Scott McQuory?
Yes.
Ken Minow?
Yes.
Daniel Roberts?
Yes. Motion passes. We've got a discussion and possible decision regarding proposed conditional use permit for Track Property Group to construct a 30,000-square-foot multi-tenant building at 205 East Morrissey Drive.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
There was no issues, planning commission, everything was good.
No, no, it's really a nice building, they're gonna use one of the units, I think there's three other units that they're, that they're gonna rent out. No, it's, it met all the engineering and zoning and everything, so.
Fine, cool, thank you.
The biggest, biggest issue you just had to do with the fire, Fire 100, they came up with a compromise that seemed to placate the fire chief, so is that accurate, fire chief?
Yes, sir.
All right, so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Discussion and possible decision regarding police department request to purchase a new squad vehicle at a cost not to exceed $44,967.50.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Any chance we're gonna get it?
I've got it.
Okay, thank you.
Did that include updating, or did that come later?
No, that's later. I think, I wanna say it's 91,000 or so, all in, right around there.
Something like that.
Hey, roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Scott McQuory?
Yes.
Ken Minow?
Yes.
Daniel Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes. We've got a discussion and possible decision regarding water department request to contract with H and H Company for up to $14,846 to calibrate monitoring equipment, pH meters, and handheld sampling devices, and water treatment plants.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
And again, the water department's paying for it.
Water department's paying for it.
Thank you.
It's a part of their operating budget.
Okay.
A roll call, please.
Scott McQuory?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Ken Minow?
Yes.
Daniel Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes. We've got a discussion regarding creating an ordinance to regulate food trucks in the city of Elkhorn.
Yeah, I asked to have this put on the agenda, just, you know, I have nothing against food trucks, okay? They're great, but most recently, there's been one that's been parked up on the north end of town, it's going on in the month. Been in the same parking lot. We have three of our fast food restaurants that are right there that pay the taxes and keep the upkeep on their buildings, and all is good. And it seems as though that this truck just showed up, that would definitely have permission from O'Reilly, because that's the parking lot that it's in. And it's been there, and I think we should take a look and see if there's some ordinances or regulations that we should look at. We have nothing right now, Adam, I believe, on food trucks.
Yeah, that's correct.
You know, I'd like to be ahead of it a little bit, because I can see that happening more often.
I think it should go before the legislative and regulatory committee, to let them chew it up and recommend an ordinance to bring it back to the full council, unless you all have a better idea.
That's fine, that's fine with me, Scott, but I think we should come up with something. I know, and did, did you get a chance to look at any other cities around us, or?
No, I haven't looked at it. Saw the one that was attached into this, and I was going to be asking our pal, Chris, on how this might affect everything that you're dealing with, and I highly suggest that you participate in the legislative committee to make sure things are covered appropriately.
In answer to your question, or, when I first read it, I was like, okay.
No, it's, it's not for, you know, like when you have Oktoberfest, Chris liked Oktoberfest, and you're gonna have so many trucks, but I know a lot of them know they, they, they would have to get a permit from the city to operate in the city. You know, in that direction is what I think we should look at.
I, I think we should consider long-term and short-term food trucks. Yeah. I don't think someone should get it passed just because they're only here for four Saturdays a year, or whatever.
Right.
So.
I agree. But, yeah, we can just, we're the committee, and have maybe look at other communities around us, I, I think there's a couple already that do have some, either ordinance or regulations.
And I don't know if it's this food truck, might be a different vendor, but there's also been a vendor that parks in the bus parking lot on 67.
No, this is a different one.
So there's, okay, I think they both serve tacos, that's why I wasn't sure it was the same company, but.
You know, like I said, it doesn't make, you know, whatever.
But it doesn't matter what they're selling, of course not.
But, but, you know, we've got three fast food restaurants right in the road there, and they're brick and mortar, and they, they're well-kept up, and all of a sudden, we got a trailer in the parking lot.
So, I would just say.
That doesn't leave, excuse me, Gary.
Yeah.
Doesn't leave and come back, it's just sitting there.
So, I, I would just suggest that when you're looking at this in the, in the committee, just don't forget ice cream trucks. Don't wanna have an issue there. I don't want, I guess, just bringing it up, so when it goes to committee, that you guys don't forget about ice cream trucks.
That'd fall into food truck cycle.
Yeah.
Food stuffs, yeah.
Yeah, just bringing them, so.
Elaine, have you, have you come across this at all? Do you have some experience with the food truck issue?
We do, so, the ordinance, I think that we put in, we sent over to Adam, was from, I think, the Village of Union Grove. So, yeah, so we had worked with them on that, and we have some experience, you know, having conversations about, do you wanna regulate, do you not wanna regulate it? What are the health impacts, and what are the things that you can control? Because they're twofold, you know, you have your health department issues, and then you have your general regulation issues. So you need to just look at it from a policy perspective, and look at those impacts, and I do think the involvement of the chamber is a good idea.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where do we go from here? Are we just gonna send it to committee then?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so no action is, is really needed. Next, we're going to adjourn to closed session. Let me read my little card here, and then we'll have my vote. The common council may entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The discussions regarding engagement agreement with law firm of Axley Byron, by Nelson, to represent the city in the lawsuit Palmer 67 revocable trust, FBO, Reza Rolaid versus Walworth County and the city of Elkhorn. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Make that motion. Second.
A roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Scott McQuory?
Yes.
Ken Minow?
Yes.
Daniel Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes. Great, we're back in open session, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the counsel of, of, Gloria Lutzke of Axley, Axley to run this in this case.
Yep, a motion to approve the engagement agreement with Axley.
I make a motion to approve the engagement agreement.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.